Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Monday, June 17th. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Mathias, please take the roll.
Good evening. Ms. Williams. Dr. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Reverend Mathias is present. Mr. Ross.
Here.
Ms. Schadke.
Here.
President Grant.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Next, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. First, we have a celebration, which is a recognition of scholarship donations by Dr. Gerald Dawkins and Gwen Dawkins and Maureen Slade.
Madam President, I would like to ask Dr. Dawkins and Mrs. Gwen Dawkins to come forward, please. And I would like to just share that both Dr. Dawkins and Mrs. Dawkins worked in the district for many, many years, actually retired from the Grand Rapids Public Schools. But every year since I have been the superintendent of schools, they have given thousands of dollars to the students in the Grand Rapids Public Schools, giving back. And this year was a special gift, and so I've asked them to come forward to share. Dr. Dawkins and Mrs. Dawkins, please.
Thank you Superintendent. Madam President, members of the board, members of the audience, thank you so much. It's been about 15, 20 years since I've been in this room. And both Gwen and I are retirees from the school system and proud retirees. And I've gone to work some other places and still working. But everything I know, I learned in this school district. So it's been a proud school district over the years, and we're so proud of the work that you're doing. Just congratulations and hats off to you. I run into you in places around the country, and your learning is still growing and all that's good. And also want to extend my congratulations to the new superintendent. Is he here?
That's right, he is not here. He's in Disney.
Okay. My congratulations and best wishes for him. And to all of you members of the board for the work that you do. Sometimes it's unheralded. People don't see you sometimes, they don't hear you. They hear bad things, they don't hear, they don't know how much time you put into this work. So as I move around the country and I see boards working, and you guys have a model here, so keep it going. So we're here tonight to celebrate with you, but also to just say that we tried to pay back a little bit for what we've gained from the school district. Education is obviously very important to us. My wife was a counselor at Creston for a long, long time, and she knows everybody from Creston. And she'll talk about the scholarship, but it's an honor and memory of our parents. And they stress education so much, and here we are today. And I never dreamed it'd take me this far. And I'm sure that Gwen has the same sentiments, but here we are today and we're able to do some things for youngsters who really need a lift, and we're able to do that, and we're glad to do it. So I'm gonna let Gwen talk a little bit about it, because she's been intimately involved. I'm in and out of town a lot, so Gwen.
Good evening to everyone. Superintendent Neal, I want to say too also that we're just proud that you had a chance to sit in this seat and lead this district. I've had a chance to work with you, not as superintendent, but I remember you were over the counselors. I can't forget that. And also when I look over here, I see Ms. Williams. She was at Creston as a student when I was a counselor. It just brings back a lot, a lot of memories. And I can't seem to shake it. I can't get away from it. I just love kids and just love to see them do well. The scholarship, the Dr. Gwen and Gerald Dawkins scholarship came up many years ago. We, just like Gerald said, we want to give back. We want to be able to help students. I had the great opportunity to go over to Union High School. I interviewed six, I think it was six students. Oh, they were all awesome. I came home and I told Gerald, I said, "We need some more money."
Which is always an issue.
So I told him, I said, and which we did increase it a little bit more, because I just, I said, "I have to do this." So they were presented with this scholarships at their awards program on May the 16th, I think it was, at Union. And what we decided to do was not go to the cream of the crop, the 4.0. So we decided to go with students that were, really wanted to go to school and were having financial difficulties, but they had good grades, they had good ACT scores, SAT scores, or whatever. And after interviewing them, some of the things that they told me, some of the things that they shared with me, I was just totally amazed. One kid shared with me that he's had his business, you know, he just started his own business, and he just really wants to get into becoming an entrepreneur. It just went on and on. So with that, you know, we just want kids to build, I'm thinking when you give kids scholarship, that builds confidence, it builds their morale, it gives them that push forward into their future, and that somebody that don't even know me cares about me, want me, see me do well, want to see me succeed. And so that's what Gerald and I try to do, you know. And we always say, what do they say, "When you make it, reach back and pull back." That's what we try to do. And it's just been a great experience, just sharing with GRPS as we move around. And I'm in and out of the city also, and I hear, you know, things about the public schools and good things, and I said, "You know, we need to do this, because GRPS for 32 years."
It's made good to us.
Well, you put it together, it's been more than 30, but for me, it was 32 years, 32 great years. And I come back and I see Mr. Johnson, I see Dr. Nelson, all of these people fed into me, helped me, and I just felt that, you know, that was the right thing to do, to give back to the kids of GRPS. And I can't forget Julie back there, I had her also.
So Gwen's covered the water for us. She says everything well. And again, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, it's been an honor to see you serve as a leadership position.
Thank you.
And board members, as I move around the country, and we work with about 450 school districts, you guys are in good shape here. I can tell you some horror stories that will make you want to walk out the room, where there's some things that are out there. So whatever you're doing, however you stay together, keep doing that and keep working on behalf of children, because down some hallway somewhere in room 205, there's a little kid, boy or girl, who's yearning for a chance to just live out their dreams. And if we do that every single day, you make every decision that you make is based on what happens for children, everything will be okay. I've seen some horrors, I see horror stories every day, every week, not every day, every week, that I'm on the road. So thank you for giving us this opportunity. Hats off to you, congratulations. I hope you have a great retirement. The district is in good hands, and we just look forward to continuing our work. And thank you for what you do every single day.
And I just want to say this one last thing, and I always say this to my kids, and I say it to the staff also. You know, kids will forget what two plus two. They'll forget a lot of things, but they will never, ever forget how you treated them. And so when I see kids, and I tell them that, I say, "Wherever you go, treat people the way you want to be treated."
I just appreciate both of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. And I would like to say that they originally gave $2,000 to students, to students at Union High School, and Gwen fell in love with the third student and brought another $1,000. So three students at Union High School will receive the scholarship for this year. But every year, they have given thousands of dollars to the students in the Grand Rapids Public Schools, just because they wanted to give back. So I thank you, them both, for that.
Thank you.
Do we have, I do have another celebration. I'm gonna ask if Mo Slade, if Maureen Slade is in the house. If she is not, I'm gonna represent Maureen. Maureen Slade, an educator, retired educator in the state of Michigan, and many years, served many years on this board, she made a donation of $2,106, and she wanted to give to the students at Union High School as well. And so on behalf of Maureen, we gave two students $1,000 each at Union High School. So we have five students at Union High School for $5,000 between Mo and Gwen and Gerald. And we also, the hundred and, I think it's $56 that Mo had left from that. She has a love for special education, and so we are going to purchase books, 150-some dollars in books on behalf of Mo Slade, Maureen Slade, I'm sorry, you guys, Maureen, in the district. And when I called her and asked her, how would she like for us to spend the money? And she said, "Any way you see fit." And I just know she has a love for Union High School, and so wanted to offer that, and she was in total agreement of that, so.
Wonderful.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mo.
Okay, do we have public comment for board agenda items?
I believe we have one for general budget.
Okay. Mr. Miller.
He just stepped out. He just left.
Okay.
Okay, so we are going to move to secretary's report.
Thank you. All right, here's some news. There are some board committee meetings happening. The ad hoc policy committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 19th, at 5:30 PM in room 101 Administration Building. Also, our finance committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 24th, at 4:30 PM in the board chambers of the Administration Building here. And lastly, the legislative committee is rescheduled for Thursday, June 27th, at 11:00 in room 301 of the Administration Building. Those are all that we have at this point.
Thank you. Now we have committee chair updates. Dr. Baker for the Academic Achievement Committee.
Yes, we've had, was it last week we had a meeting? Week and a half ago, we had a meeting. And two major items that we discussed at length, and we will be continuing these discussions throughout the year. We had feedback on the process of the teacher evaluation system, and the board discussed ways to get feedback on the experience that both staff, the teaching staff and administrators have with that evaluation, and that will be, discussion is ongoing. We also created, in collaboration with the superintendent and her administration, a formal application process that will be coming to the board anytime a new academy is considered, specifically at Ottawa Hills High School. So Ottawa Hills High School will be creating new academies next year, will be the Hospitality Management, and then all future academies will come to the board. The superintendent is coaching this board now on how to hold the next superintendent's feet to the fire on accomplishing things, anyway. But this would be also, and then I'll need to discuss with President Grant, a strategy. This will actually be formally approved, but we will have it as a workshop, a work session first, because we need to discuss how this can be a model for how the board approves major curriculum changes in the future, not course adoption, but major curriculum changes, and how the board can have more of a role in general in that, and that's in relationship with Academic Achievement Committee, too. So that is, that meeting.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
No report, exactly.
Okay. Next, we have several action items. I believe that it is Mr. Oberst that will?
Matthew, Matthew Beers will come first. That's okay. Oh, no. So Matthew will be the first to present on Child Discovery Center.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, President Grant, and board members. I'm pleased tonight to bring the recommendation for an additional board member that the Grand Rapids Child Discovery Center has made the recommendation to add to their board. As you know, that Child Discovery Center was chartered by us in 2000, and we approve their recommendations if we see fit. I believe the resume and letter of intent was shared with you for Amelia Grayson. She's been an active member of the school community there. They feel that her experience in healthcare field will bring an interesting new perspective to the board. Questions?
Yes, can you just explain to the rest of the board, especially for newer board members, what the process is for the vetting of these board members? I, my sense is that we kind of serve, we are officially the role, but there's a vetting process that the Discovery Center board goes through?
They do have a vetting process internally with their board. It's in their minutes. It's just as verbose as ours, but it does not include the election piece.
I have a question. I ask this every year. How many kids are there in that building? How many do you service?
I came prepared with that. 272, Ms. Downs.
What grades, or are they all?
And it's K5.
It's K5.
It's K5, and they're taught through the Reggio Emilia approach, which Reggio is not a person, but a small village in Italy. And I believe Maria Montessori meandered through that village back in the day, because they're pretty close cousins to what we do in our Montessori schools.
Now, are these Grand Rapids Public School kids, or are they kids from all over?
So they are, that school is filled with a variety of students. Vast majority are residents of Grand Rapids.
But they do not count?
But they do not count on our FTE or our scores. But we do support them as the charter, and we get a slight admin fee off their FTE.
Wouldn't it be better if they were just one of our schools?
So I can answer that.
Hey, this is the third time now. I want to know why. Maybe I'll remember it this time.
Well, it isn't our decision of whether or not they would be a part of it. We are in conversation, we have been, we would like for them to join the district, and hopefully at some point they will, but as it is, they are a standalone district.
And what can we do to change that, anything?
We need to, we have to continue the conversation. Continue the conversation. And so one sticking point is, they own a building, and so we have to figure out if they so desire to join the Grand Rapids Public Schools family, we would have to work everything out, so.
And our current charter is not up for renewal for a little bit, but they, we, the board can look at amendments to it to strengthen our partnership, but we have a very healthy partnership with Lisa Heiney, the executive director who leads the school.
The teachers are not part of the union or anything like that?
They are GREA members, but not GRPS employees.
And then, once the students reach fifth grade?
So the data shows that at least half of them make choices within our GRPS schools for sixth grade learning.
You mentioned there was ongoing discussion about them possibly coming on board. Are there any particular barriers or struggles that have been identified that maybe?
Yeah, so I wouldn't say that there's been struggles, but that's not one that I would discuss in public. But I think you have to continue to strengthen the relationship, right? I think that's one, and you have to create win-win situations for both entities. But that's not one that I would discuss in public of what are sticking points.
And who does, who does our talking? Does the superintendent do our talking?
That would be your superintendent of schools, and Johnny Hope.
Whoever that might be, yes.
Whoever that might be, that's correct. That is not the conversation for board members. I will put that on the record.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the Grand Rapids Child Discovery Center Board of Director Appointment?
So moved. Support.
Reverend Mathias?
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
And at this point, President Grant, Larry Oberst has five, the next five items on the agenda, and so he will discuss all five before the consent agenda.
We had a chat. We're record time today.
Nothing. He took his hour the other day.
Let's just stop, stopwatch.
By Tuesday afternoon last week, it was two hours. He spent two hours in that meeting, for the budget, so.
That's because that's the way it felt.
That's right.
I enjoyed it. I enjoyed the budget.
She really did.
Just so the public knows, it was very thorough.
I appreciate it, Reverend Mathias.
Informed.
Good evening again, Ms. Grant, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, rest of the board. You're probably tired of seeing me about now, but you'll have a nice, long break after this meeting before you'll see me again. So anyways, there are several things, as the superintendent mentioned, in front of you. First, just a brief purchasing agenda. These are items that we need, we could not wait till the next meeting, which would be in July, middle of July, so we brought them to you today. Just a couple of things. The first one there is, we've been working really for the last probably year or so on a new English language arts curriculum for district-wide, and it's because of the investment we would have to make, we have to split it up over a couple of years. And direction, the process right now, I'm still finalizing the details for what we will implement in the 1920 year. So the number ahead, the number in front of you to approve is for that new ELA for the 6th through 12th grades. The price isn't set yet, we're still negotiating, but it should not exceed that $555,000 number there, and likely could be less than that for the first year. And then we have as a priority for next year's budget to bring the elementary level in for the ELA.
Now, is this just technology, it's not books?
No, that includes the licensing. It's, again, it's, we're not quite sure, but up to a six-year license, consumables, which are books and workbooks that are replaced every year. And then they actually are throwing in novels for each student with that also, so that's the way. And then there's some costs associated with the professional development aspect of it, and they bring in a, I'm gonna use the term consultant, that works side by side on a full-time basis with our teachers, and to get it implemented during that first year. So that's kind of an all-inclusive. And then under Section 2, the Promise Zone, you know, it's gonna really, the planning over the next, like, three to nine months, it's gonna really ramp up, and we're gonna need some help in terms of project management. And so Canary is, we have entertained a proposal from them to provide project management services specific to the Promise Zone. As you may recall, they have helped us on our capital campaign, as well as the XQ, and they've done a great job for us. So that is an estimate of about $60,000 over the next 12 months, so it's a 12-month contract on that. So that are, those are the two items that we'll bring to you today on the purchasing agenda, so we can get these things in motion.
I have a question with regards to exactly what services are we looking for this contract, the project manager to provide exactly, with regards to the promise?
Everything that it takes to organize that, so, you know, communications with, and this board, obviously at the last work session, we talked about the board, and, you know, waiting for you to approve that, obviously, till we hear the final nominee from the Senate. So help with coordination of meetings and all the detail surrounding setting up, as I mentioned last week, the Promise Zone Authority is a separate legal entity. So in, you know, helping us engage legal counsel and consultants to go through that whole process. You know, there's a certain level of, early on, of infrastructure that has to be in place. Help with, helping the board and the work committee in the fundraising campaign, which is, you know, their sweet spot, obviously, as well as developing what the plan's gonna look like that gets submitted to Treasury for their approval. I mean, who's eligible and all those kinds of things, so. So that's generally what they're going to be. We just don't have the internal capacity right now within the district to do it with everything else we're going on, and things will get missed. So that's their main responsibility, keep things on track. Help, obviously, help us develop the initial timeline of when we get this thing up and running, and make sure we hit our milestones in terms of those kinds of things, so.
The other thing is, you don't want to add someone to the payroll, one, because you just pay benefits. And as soon as you no longer need the position, then you have unemployment costs, so you don't want to add someone on to the retirement system. You bring a consultant in, so then they can work as needed.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to add to the current people's work, even, because this is a separate board that's helping people.
Exactly, exactly, Dr. Baker.
And then, does this vendor have experience working specifically with Promise Zone?
Not specific, but again, there's, they do have lots of experience in project management, which is, we will obviously bring in, in our decision, bring in the other professionals we need, as I mentioned, separate legal, and it will take some legal work, and we have a relationship with legal firms that help, and other consultants, too, that we'll need help with over the next 12 months.
But they do have experience in raising dollars, which is what you need, millions.
Yeah, as you may recall, the first two years, we have to fund it philanthropically, and that's their sweet spot in raising money, so.
They also have higher education, and they work with Ferris and probably other higher education, so I think that they have a familiarity there.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
Motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
Support.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Reverend, Dr. Flores excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we have the Dream Fund donation.
Dream Fund donation, this is one of the individual Dream Fund applications that exceeded the $10,000 threshold that we, in our new policies for these particular grants, so it needs to come before you. This is for a library media center makeover at Westwood Middle School. It's been approved by the GR, the Dream Fund Committee, if you will. Everything's in place internally in terms of, this took some input from our technology people and our facilities people, and they're all on board, and glad to get this approval and have some of this work done take place during the summertime, so we need your approval for this.
Do I have a motion to approve the Dream Fund donation?
Moved.
Support.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we, would you like to parcel these out, so we can do the general operating?
Yeah, we'll have to, yeah. The next three items are, as I mentioned last week, the work session, require three separate actions by this board to approve the general operating budget for next year, the special revenue, the debt retirement fund. As Reverend Mathias put it out, I did a thorough job last week, so I presume there are no further questions tonight from the board on the budget. So a simple, three separate votes for the three budgets, and we're good to go.
Motion to approve general operating budget.
Support.
And this is for all three? One, okay, the first, general operating. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis? Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, do I have a motion to approve the special revenue fund?
Motion to approve the special revenue fund?
Support.
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And do I have a motion to approve the debt retirement fund?
So moved.
Support.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We did that quick to make sure you didn't get a chance to talk. I just better not here tomorrow. That approval process took an hour, okay? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda grouping?
So moved.
Support.
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, we do have public comment for non-agenda items. Mr. Miller?
President Grant, quick question about the discussion items. Work session, July 8th. What's the, so we're not having a meeting in July 1?
Yes.
No discussion needed. But work session on the 8th, would that be a 4:30 or 5:30 start?
The work session is scheduled for 4:30 at this time. So, no board meeting on July 1, in observation of the holiday, and 4:30 meeting on July 8. 4:30 work session. And now, Mr. Miller, we'll have three minutes set aside for you.
Well, first of all, I don't have three minutes. Okay. Watch, so we're back. We've been around Grand Rapids and Millers since 1879 continuously. Higgins ran 29 years, America's longest civil rights case, and here you've done nothing to expose the situation here in Grand Rapids. The city has become Montgomery of the 21st century. Your bus routes black primarily, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 14, buried beneath the wealthy viaducts where its fancy, fancy routes like the 6 out of EGR marched down Lyon. The $75 million boom angle totally unnecessary. Out to Allendale, the 50 college kids route, GVSU already comes downtown, totally unnecessary. They march, their buses march north and south on Monroe and up Pill Hill, Michigan. Our bus blocks are cut down, Catholic some bad, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 14, 15, 16. Don't get me started on the crutch, crack or 18. Our Catholic bus routes are cucked out. But no bus service whatsoever out to West Catholic. In the last century, the 1, 3 ran out there for decades. Gentlemen, one of the two witnesses, the last witness at the full budget hearing, said apparently our Catholic and Baptist schools should not be included. He was incensed about it. Had a conflict of interest, maybe a hatchback, 1939 hatchback matter. His parents are, worked for the board ad. Forty-three percent of U.S. combat deaths, World War II, were sustained by Catholic America. There were eight places like Hawn and the Holocaust camps. We, at a recent board meeting, at one of your properties out north on Fuller, that place is always changing names, but there was an obscene outburst by a politician who parades around, gets elected on his Irish ballot named baby name, but an off chance he is actually Catholic. I wanted to ask our bishop to excommunicate him. There's no place in government for Surma. Surma does not belong in government, period, and occurred on your property out north, a school on Fuller off Leonard. So I thank you very much for all volunteering you do, and Mr. Ross, you and I first met out of Meyer Garden, if you recall, and the situation is continuing. On the handout you've got here, Jerry and Betty Ford, 26 years in Grand Rapids Public Schools, I think it was tied up close to the city then.
Mr. Miller, you have about a minute to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, some fashion, us Rapidudes and Rapidals should be reimbursed for all the schooling we paid for in their government schools, 26 years, South Madison, Central and Fountain, and sticking up for the world's greatest generation. They've always been my heroes. I'm a little bit behind them, but number one, when they prophesize something, it should be music from their generation, which they themselves played.
Okay, your time is up.
Pardon?
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
For this exercise in democracy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, this evening is our superintendent's last board meeting, and so I know she didn't think that I was going to let her get away that easy. We want to make sure that we just let you know how much we appreciate you, and we have spent a lot of time with you, but you have a lot of people who spent time with you and have done a lot of good work for this district with you and in this city, so we have some guests who would like to have their own public comment moment.
That's scary.
Make sure you limit them to three minutes.
Oh, my gosh.
Each.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my gosh. Don't give them three minutes. They only get one minute each.
All right, we are going to start with Commissioner Lanier.
Good evening.
You only have three minutes.
I only have three minutes. Got to scrap my notes. Good evening, Board of Education, Madam President, and to our very dear Superintendent Teresa Weatherall Neal. First, I'm going to start just by thanking the Board of Education for the opportunity to have our Safe Pitch Night in your space next Tuesday, the 25th, and it's a way for the community to respond to violence in our community. We're pitching ideas of their own, and so if you have any ideas, if you're a nonprofit organization, you can be granted up to $10,000 from the City of Grand Rapids for your idea to reduce violence for 15- to 24-year-olds. And if you're an individual, you can do the same and be awarded up to $1,000 if you have any ideas that are awarded safe grant. And Mr. Ross serves on our Safe Task Force. Thank you for your service, and thank you for letting us use your space. That was my intro to help me get through the rest of this. So, you know, I have some words written because that's going to keep me within my time. I don't even, where's the timer? Where is it?
We'll let you know.
Turn that thing over.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, I, you know, I first, I know that there have been a number of people taking credit for your, your time as superintendent, and who decided for you to be here and all that good stuff. So I'm not going to come here to dispel that discussion because I know many of you want me to, but I'm not going to do that. I just want to say time has flown, and time flies when you're having fun, and this community has had a ball with having you as our superintendent. Thank you so much for your sacrifice, your commitment, and how you've taught, without being a traditional educator, this community about what it means to educate children. Thank you for that. You know, I think great leaders, and I have a few words, are confident, and you are one of those who have been confident in yourself, confident enough to learn from others. You have had a number of superintendents serve while you've been at this district, and serving close enough to learn from the things that they put in place and the things that they failed to do so. And I think that confidence in learning from others has allowed you the opportunity to serve us all better because you were able to kind of remove self from this and do what's best for children. You're wise enough to know when to ignore haters, when they wanted to tell you who to keep, who not to keep, who to hire, who not to hire, and you're wise enough to know and to use your own discernment about who you should have on your team in order for you to move the district forward. You were smart enough to know when to leave, in the sense that you have a whole nother career ahead of you if you wanted to do so, and it takes guts and smartness to be able to make those decisions. You're impactful enough to write the vision and make it plain, so you knew where you were headed at all times, and we all did as well. And after creating that vision, you just executed the heck out of it, and we are thankful for that, for you staying on, because again, staying on track and not letting the fray kind of dictate which direction you were headed. Discerning enough to know that when you're exiting, and how to make sure that you have the capacity that remains behind as you're exiting. It takes a lot of discernment to do that, including educating your team and experienced enough to make sure that you groom them in order for them to be prepared to be pushed out of the nest sometimes, to do what's necessary so that they can flourish. And gifted enough to know that you've been placed here for such a time as this, and you didn't forget that, and knew that a calling was on your life, and that the calling that was on your life was greater than you. And if you didn't fulfill your calling, many others would have been negatively impacted by it. And that takes a lot. That takes a lot, and you did it without being, without getting a big head. You did it keeping yourself humble and always giving glory to where glory was due, and I thank you for that. And I just thank you for being who you are to me personally, and from going from the relationship that we had here to, the relationship we had before you were superintendent, to then the relationship as superintendent and board member, and to a relationship outside of that where I consider you a confidant and a person that I can call at the drop of the dime, who will understand the issue that I'm experiencing someplace else in order to kind of help either talk me off the ledge or give me the stick that I needed to make sure I made it happen. So all of this, thank you for using your loyalty, your candor, and your wit, and being straight with no chaser, and I appreciate that, and thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. John dared me to do that.
Tom, I'm ready on time.
Thank John. Not, not, thank John.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I want to begin by saying hello to my fellow elected officers here on the dais. Also want to especially recognize the leadership of President Grant. I will, I am certain that the work or the tasks that you've had, that you've had, that you've partaken in, in terms of dealing with the transition, has not been an easy one, and I just want to recognize you for the candor and the leadership that you've shown as this process has taken place. There have been others who have come before you who have sat in that seat who didn't have to necessarily go through a transitional process, and I think you've handled it well.
Thanks.
So, here on this evening, of course, to speak of my friend, Teresa Weatherall Neal, and T, I thought that I would actually provide just a short quote from your namesake, and that is, Mother Teresa, who said, "Wherever God has put you, that is your vocation. It is not what we do, but how much we love, how much love we put into it." My sister, it's clear that you were put here in GRPS for a purpose, for an assignment for such a time as this. You have served with integrity, with excellence, and with a commitment to do that which is best for our children. What people probably don't know about you is that being superintendent was the title that came with the job, but the real occupation that you undertook was that of servant leader, with an emphasis on the word servant. For it was Dr. King who said, "Everybody can be great because anybody can serve." You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love. There goes that word "love" again. My sister, your tenure here has been an intentional and unapologetic display of love. You've shown your love for the children of this district, the teachers and administrators of this district, the parents and guardians who trust the lives of their children of this district with you, and the countless other people who have a connection to GRPS. No one can question your love for the men, women, and children of this district. No one. Your namesake, Mother Teresa, used the word "vocation." I would humbly submit that as I've watched you during our friendship of over 20 years, this has not been a vocation, but as my colleague and my sister, Commissioner Lanier has mentioned, it has been a calling. You didn't run away from the calling on your life to lead this district through some of the most difficult times, but instead you stepped into it. You stepped forward and replied, "Here I am. Send me." And so that's what the Lord did. He sent you. He called you, and last I checked, he doesn't always call the equipped, but he always equips those that he calls. So, my dear sister, on behalf of the Urban League of West Michigan, and on behalf of someone who loves you dearly and has called you friend for over 20 years, I want to say thank you for putting love into every bit of the work that you did for this district. Thank you for answering the call to serve and called upon, and thank you for being a blessing to our children and loving them like your own. Well done, my sister. Well done.
Yes.
School Board members, Superintendent Neal.
Yes.
It's a privilege for me to be here tonight to say a few words about our wonderful superintendent. First, there are three or four other people I want to thank because, that's why Teresa's here. Dr. Tony, Pastor John, Wendy Fob, who had the ability all those years ago to say, "We found the right person. She's the one who can lead us and take us to where we need to be." So I want to thank you first for giving her those opportunities. Because of that, we have one of the best superintendents we've ever had. In January of 1968, I came into this system, and Dr. J. Pileman was the superintendent. If you look up on that wall, you will see Dr. Pileman's picture, and you will see a whole lot of other ones past him from 1968 till here we sit today. And I assure you that she's the best we've ever had. And I've lived that life, those 50-some years, to know that. So it's not just idle talk. She is the best that we've ever had. She surpassed them in improving the school system, all of them put together. Teresa and I began to work together over 40 years ago. I got a telephone call one day that said, "I have a young lady that I'm going to send over to work for you because you need a secretary, and we think she's going to be okay. But if she's not okay, you call us, send her back, we'll send you somebody else." Well, folks, I think we can see that it did work out okay, and how privileged I was to have that wonderful young lady working for me over 40 years. And how privileged I was to have that wonderful young lady working for me over 40 years ago. She's been a friend and a colleague all those 40 years. Seven years ago, I had the ability to retire, because when you get old, you get to retire. So I retired. And I've been working here in this school district as a volunteer for Teresa for those seven years. And that has been a wonderful time. We have sat down and had dreamt many plans, and then started to put them into practice with the theory every time, "How will this help our kids? What will this do for the kids in our community?" And that's been our goal all along. She said at that time that I had to have an office in this building, and I went, "You gotta be kidding. I'm retired. I don't want an office. You're having an office." So I now have an office here, and I've had it for those seven years. But the beauty of Teresa, she took me around and introduced me to all the folks that I didn't know, and I knew many, but I didn't know everybody, from her cabinet members to her staff, and said, "This is Max, and he's going to be here." And that's all she said. So I've... And that's all a superintendent has to say. So I've had the privilege of being able to work with these wonderful people who are sitting back here all those years. And I can assure you that they will be carrying out her dreams and her plans that she has put together. That that staff, her cabinet, has not changed in those seven years. There are very few people in business or in schools who can say, "I have the same cabinet that I've had since the day I started." And what does that say? It says, "The leader is outstanding." The leader leads, doesn't boss, although she can boss you. But she can do all those, but they follow, and they're happy to do it. So I say, "Thank you, Teresa, for allowing me to do this all these years." I say to you that my wife, Jan, and I love you. And Joe mentioned that. Love is a strong word. And we consider her a part of our family. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
Well, how can I say about Teresa, like I call her?
Madam President.
Excuse me. No.
You know, like the gentleman before me, he started in 68. I started in 75 with Phil Ronco. So Teresa and I come a long way. But in that trajectory of my profession, I have never seen a superintendent like you. So committed to the community and to all the children in Grand Rapids Public Schools. I mean, no one messed up with Teresa's children. You have been a blessing to the district. And your leadership has been transparent, no hiding. Everything is in the open, and we appreciate that. I also appreciate the proximity that you have with the Latino community, the respect that you have with the Latino community, and the commitment to serve the Latino community. We have so many needs in our community, and you have been there to meet those needs. You're a blessing, because you are a wise person, and wisdom you don't learn in the university. It's a gift, and you have that. You have the sense of discernment, would help you to do whatever your accomplishments. And also, you have a ton of common sense, oh my gosh, that you need to do this job. If you don't have common sense, forget it. So you have, you know, the board... I know you're going to miss her. The community is going to miss you. Even so, you're going to be still around. I love you for everything you have done for all the children. We share the same passion for children, for the education and for the success of all the children. Thank you. Gracias. Que Dios te bendiga. God bless you. And I know you're going to be dispersing more blessings in West Michigan, and I don't know where, but we love you. Te quiero mucho.
My turn now, I guess. I got to imagine what it must feel like for you guys. You thought you were at the end of a meeting. That's what you get for putting "public comment" at the end. Again, Ron Kenev, Superintendent of Kent ISD. I'd like to thank the board for your service. Start there. You know, Max said, "It's a testament to a leader in terms of retaining that leadership team." I just can't imagine. I think I've lost half my cabinet in a month. You know, let alone, let alone the seven years. That really says something. So something tells me I'll have the opportunity, probably plenty of opportunities, to say my farewells and goodbyes to Teresa perhaps a little bit later. But I did want to take this opportunity to publicly to thank you, Teresa, for your incredible, dedicated leadership of the Grand Rapids Public Schools for these past seven years. I think you undoubtedly have a great understanding of the impact that this superintendent has had here within this community, here within the Grand Rapids Public Schools, but certainly within the city. But you may not always have a full understanding, or perhaps you do, of her impact throughout this region, this county, and this state, whether it's serving on a blue ribbon panel that the governor has assembled, her monthly contributions to our Superintendents Association. She has not only done a remarkable and a phenomenal job of leading this school system, but she has left her mark and has had a humongous impact... Is that a word, "humongous"? But a very large impact on her colleagues within this region and within this county. And for that, I'm very grateful. So I just, I want to thank this board for, seven years ago, the making the choice that you made in your superintendent. Teresa, I want to thank you personally for all that you've done for the children here within Grand Rapids, but the children of our county and the children of the state, and for me personally. So we're going to miss you a great deal.
Thank you. Dr. Pink.
Evening. Put the three minutes on that dude. Superintendent, what'd you say?
I said, "Put the three minutes on it."
Don't forget where you work. Yes. I want to start off by speaking to the board. So you can listen, but... Right now, right now. So, board, a little bit, tiny bit of my history. So several lifetimes ago, I was Director of Teacher Preparation at one of the largest teacher preparation providers in the state of Michigan. And one thing that we did in providing for the teachers and education and administrators of that Oklahoma City Public School District, among other districts around Oklahoma City, is that I worked with many deans and directors across the state. And one thing that my dean at the University of Central Oklahoma, one thing that we would talk about very often is the preparation of superintendents, because that was part of what we did. But let me tell you, that one thing that we would often say in recognizing is that when we would talk about what we felt like was the toughest job, not only as far as a school district is concerned, but one of the toughest jobs that we saw in the city of Oklahoma City was the superintendent position of Oklahoma City Public Schools. That was one of the hardest jobs. But what we also realized is that it wasn't just Oklahoma City. We said, "That is one of the toughest jobs that anyone could ever have," because of all the challenges, all the stuff, all the rigmarole that comes your way. It is the toughest job in that city. So fast forward to my time here to be blessed in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I can tell you that you need to understand that one of the toughest jobs in Grand Rapids, Michigan, is the individual that sits in that chair. It's just because of the challenges. It's because of the things that come that individual's way. But I want to say that at the same time telling you that you have had one of the best people in that chair to handle one of the toughest jobs in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Congratulations on the wisdom of those who've sat in these chairs, knowing that Teresa Weather O'Neal was going to be that person. Congratulations. Done with you. Now, sis. Sis, one thing that I aspire to in every job that I have, and the one that I have right now, I think I aspire to this more than any other job I've had, and that is, when I am done at Grand Rapids Community College, it is important to me that I leave that institution better than what I founded. And the thing I can say to you, that not only is our institution proud that you are one of ours, but you are leaving this better than you found it. And to leave the job that's the toughest in Grand Rapids better than you found it, I say congratulations to you. On behalf of the greatest community college in this country, the faculty, staff, and administration of that institution, the best alumni in the world, our institution says to you, sis, congratulations. God bless you, and stay close.
Thank you.
Good evening, board and superintendent. I just am so grateful to God to be here today and see you at your retirement. We grew up together. We went to school together. I didn't know you would be a superintendent, but I knew you would be something. Always intelligent in school, always strong, a role model even then. But she's tough. We went to a tough school.
We did.
So I saw moments y'all didn't see. She's tough. That's all I'm going to say. But I thank you for what you did for our kids, Superintendent Weather O'Neal. I thank you, because when you came here, we needed you badly. You have done so well that people forget what you walked into. They so much forget what you walked into. There's trouble at all schools. You know, being a journalist on the radio, I read every day what's happening in Kent County. But when something happens in an urban school, somehow it finds its way into the media. But the example you set for our kids, the number one thing that I know that you did here is you taught them to believe again. Because to see somebody that went to Grand Rapids Public Schools, come in at that point when we needed somebody to be a leader, somebody to take us to the next level, for them to watch you do that when I talk to the kids, they believe. Because when you don't believe and you don't have hope, it's easy to throw everything away. It's easy to be ready to risk it all in a second and end up somewhere you don't want to go, because you don't believe. But you got them believing again. You led by example. Our new theme schools, there's a lot of innovative things that you were able to do. And as you kiss your past goodbye and embrace your future, I just hope God, if you spend some time with God, so He can help guide you to the next point here in Kent County where we need you. Because when you're where you're needed, you excel, and everyone around you excels, and a city and county as a whole has excelled with you. And I know it wasn't easy, and I know there's so many things happen, good, controversial, that we could bring up. But the thing is, you did it. You brought us to the next level. I hope the board will pick a superintendent that can take us to the next level, keep being you, and just go where God needs you. And I'm so proud. Have no other words. My schoolmate has set a fine example. I love you. I'm getting my hug now, because after this, everybody's going to surround you. I love you, but kiss the past goodbye, embrace the future, and continue being you. Congratulations.
Thank you. You never follow the rules.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Dale Robertson. I'm with the Grand Rapids Public Museum, and I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you tonight. My connection here is via the Grand Rapids Public Museum School, that something started with a couple of "what-if" conversations during a few training runs at Run GR with fellow board member, your fellow board member, Tony Baker. And then, of course, the museum school became a reality. That was really early on in the administration of the Teresa Weather O'Neal administration. And it was early on, and I'm going to guess right from the very first day, that she began to remind us that the children of Grand Rapids Public Schools are not just her kids, that they were our kids. And so as the museum school was conceived, planned, developed, and opened, it did so as a place, at least from my perspective, that would meet multiple and unique learning styles and needs. And so for this, I believe that Teresa Weather O'Neal and GRPS and the board really deserve high honors and high accolades. So what do I mean by that? Well, we all have our own unique cognitive personalities. You know, for instance, for me, I'm more auditory than visual. I'm definitely kinetic and tactile. And the museum would be perfect for a kid like me and all the other kids that go there with whom, since they're my roommates now, that I share, let's just say, very similar school behaviors. I feel like I know them. So I would argue that the museum school is an example of how Teresa Weather O'Neal and this board and this administration has made good on her challenge to the system and the community to see the students, all of the students, as our kids. So Madam President, if I may speak directly to the superintendent, I'd like to say to Teresa that I thank you and I salute you. I hope you take from here in your time at GRPS a feeling of accomplishment, of deep satisfaction, and of fulfillment. And I hope that you will accept from us as the community, and take that with you also, our thanks, our well wishes, our appreciation, and our, most of all, I think, our admiration. So, superintendent, I want to emphasize that. Superintendent Teresa Weather O'Neal, congratulations to you. And may I close now with a portion of a scripture from the Gospel of Matthew. "Well done, thou good and faithful servant."
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Madam Board President and fellow board members. My name is Omar Cuevas, and I'd like to direct some words to Superintendent Weather O'Neal. As a GRPS parent and fellow polar bear, I want to share some words of gratitude. I was very intentional when thinking where to send my children. Initially, because I had faith that things would turn around in GRPS, and then because I had faith in you and your leadership. My faith was not in vain, and I love my children. And on behalf of Annie, little Omar, and Adrian, thank you. They're on their way.
Thank you.
There are people that do a job because they're good at it, and there are people that do it because they have a calling. So God has used you as an instrument for good for all our GRPS children. You leave a legacy, and GRPS has transformed.
Thank you.
You did it. Muchas gracias. We don't always know all the sacrifices that someone does, all the hard work, late nights and weekends. But I've learned that there is someone who does keep track of everything. So, and I've learned that he has a book where he keeps all these things written down. So with that, may God bless you and keep you.
Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. We have just a few quick things to round it out. But I do want to say thank you so much for joining us and for helping me to let our Superintendent know how much we appreciate her. So first, as a Board, we have a resolution that we would like to put in place. And I'm gonna call Mr. Hemhold to read the resolution for us.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Superintendent Weather O'Neal. This is gonna be a little harder than I thought it was gonna be.
I decided to put everyone on the side.
Yeah, you threw me a curveball, too. Whereas Teresa Weather O'Neal was unanimously appointed to serve as the interim Superintendent for the Grand Rapids Public Schools effective January 4, 2012, by the Grand Rapids Board of Education at its January 3, 2012, regular Board meeting. Whereas Teresa Weather O'Neal, with a collaborative leadership style, immediately embarked on a listening tour and developed a transformation plan. She included parents, students, staff, Board members, community leaders, foundations, business owners, neighborhood associations, and many more. She took the helm at a tipping point for the district. And whereas the Board of Education believed Teresa Weather O'Neal was the right leader at the right time to do this work and appointed her the Superintendent of Schools at their June 18, 2012, regular Board meeting, making the appointment effective July 1, 2012. And whereas Teresa Weather O'Neal has had a remarkable career serving as the Superintendent of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, she reunited the community around her transformative vision and plan to stabilize the district and improve academic outcomes for all students, bringing renewed confidence in the district, which has contributed greatly to the vitality of the city. And whereas Teresa Weather O'Neal has received countless local, state, and national accolades, recognizing her and her work, the Grand Rapids Public Schools has also been recognized at the local, state, and national levels through her leadership. She has received honorary doctorates from Grand Valley State University, 2018, and Ferris State University, 2019. And whereas Teresa Weather O'Neal has given her time, talent, and tenacity to the Grand Rapids Public Schools, demonstrating leadership through many roles spanning more than 43 years. She has held the following positions: Administrative Assistant, 1977 to 1999; Coordinator of Compliance, 1999 to 2004; Co-Director of Community and Student Services, 2004, 2005; Assistant Superintendent of Community and Student Affairs, 2004 to 2012; Interim Superintendent, 2012, and Superintendent of Schools, 2012 to 2019. She has also served in countless boards and civic affiliations. And whereas Teresa Weather O'Neal, excuse me, whereas Teresa Weather O'Neal has truly delivered on her vision and plan creating a model for bringing people together to do what is best for children. And whereas Teresa Weather O'Neal contributed the success of the Grand Rapids Public Schools with her expertise, heart, fealty, and love for all children and people, exemplifying her commitment to all who are connected to Grand Rapids Public Schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Grand Rapids Board of Education do hereby congratulate and commend Teresa Weather O'Neal for her 43 years of service to the school district and the children of Grand Rapids and wish her all the best in her future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Teresa Weather O'Neal and a copy be placed and filed.
Nice, nice.
This is also the photo that will be placed on our wall of superintendents. This is also a gift that comes from our full board to say thank you. So we appreciate you. Okay, so we are back to the agenda.
Madam President, if I could speak, if I can. So everyone knows I am a crybaby. But I'm gonna get through this one. You know, being a leader is... It's not about the policies, you guys. It isn't even about the meetings. It is about children. And staff. And I have nothing but love, not only for Grand Rapids, but for the county. We need leaders in our cities, in our school districts. And people don't want to step up, and I don't blame them. This is hard. It's hard to be the commissioner. It's hard to be the superintendent, the president. Right, directors, you guys. It is extremely difficult. And I think that if you can lead with love, suspend judgment. Give people the benefit of the doubt. You may not always agree. You may not even like each other. And that's okay. That is okay. But to be so polarized that you cannot hold a conversation, I think, is the wrong thing to do. I think you have to show respect and love, even when you disagree. Even when you disagree. Figure out a way to come back to the table. Because there's someone, and it's usually a child, that may not have someone sitting at the top. For every decision I've made, every decision I've made, I've thought about that child who may not have someone sitting at the top who can navigate these systems. Board members, I say to you, to the Board that actually hired me, I say, "Thank you for taking a chance." They knew who they were getting. I never pretended to be anyone other than who I am. But I say to that Board, I say to this Board, and all the other Board members that left, "Thank you for allowing me to be transparent and to be me." And I say to other superintendents across the state and across this country, "You have the answer in your community. Pull people together. Give them a voice about their children. You cannot do it without parents and without community leaders. You'll find those with another agenda. Ignore them. Give them their three minutes. Give them their three minutes. But you can't get off focus. For the people who come to complain and they don't put their children in Grand Rapids Public Schools, I will be off your payroll in a minute, so I can say this. You guys, let me tell you something. Don't come and complain to my Board or to anyone's Board when you don't put those that you treasure most in here. Put skin in the game. Put skin in the game. Don't just take the paycheck. Don't come for your three minutes of fame. Put what you treasure most. What you treasure most. And whether it's Grand Rapids Public Schools or East Grand Rapids or Forest Hills, don't harass those superintendents when you don't put your most treasured... Whoever that... For me, it's my grandchildren. They're here. They're here. So every decision I make is because of CJ and Leila. And I say to you, "Don't do it." This is hard work being a Board member. It's hard work for Board members, especially in urban districts, you guys. We have a great time here that we can be transparent. We don't have to agree. We don't even have to like each other. But we are transparent and we fight on behalf of children. Your children are in good hands. They will do the right thing. And then I say to my cabinet, "You will not meet people more dedicated than the people you have working on behalf of your children. You will not. You guys have been my ride or die in the middle of the night, taking my text messages, answering. And it hasn't always been fun, but we've always done it about children. And that's what I say to all of you in this community. Stay focused. Stay focused on children, right? Don't let people get you off your square. Don't do that. Don't do that. And there are some that will look for two minutes of fame on the backs of poor children. And they will pretend. They will pretend that they're interested. They're not. You guys stay focused on what we know we have to do in Grand Rapids. You will be awesome. And to this team here that came, I say, "Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to serve. Thank you for taking time to come. I do hold the record for having the longest celebration, but it is my last celebration. And so I am entitled."
Dr. Baker, do you have a comment?
Yes, and fortunately for you all, there is no time limit on Board member comment. I have so many things to say and I wanted... You know, there's moments, probably one of the most significant moments of my life was the chance, by luck of the draw, that I happened to be Vice President. Sanita was President, and the two of us got to drive to your house. And I didn't even know you. The only thing I knew about you was that you treated me nicely. That's what I knew. But when I left your house that day, I knew that we were headed in the right direction by far. I don't want to talk about what you've accomplished. We've heard that enough. I want to talk about what we've accomplished. Okay? And I say that not to toot my own horn, but when there's... I won't go to too many stories, but during the first year that you were Superintendent, Ferris brought a group of GRPS people out to Colorado to consider how to create a teacher cadet program, which took us years to get right, but we got it, right? And there was a time that I texted you, I think that you were leaving for the airport, and you called me your partner. And that's what this has been. And so, when I talk about what we've accomplished, I think there's numerous people in the city that have done all kinds of great things for children. And they've done it because they've been your partner. And I count myself one of those people. And I'm very fortunate as a result. And I'm quite sure that I would not have had the result, the impact that I've had, if I was not your partner. You've made me your partner. You've made everybody in that front row your partner, and everybody in the rest of the building your partner. And the city's children are better. And I think Commissioner Womack talked about how much, and others talked about making the system better, but no one will know quite what the city would have been had you not become Superintendent. And this city is what it is today as a result of the work that happened here and upstairs. And I will forever treasure the friendship, but I will forever treasure the partnership that we've had. And it's just deep inside my core.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis.
I have not had the privilege to know you very long, but I want to say thank you for welcoming me and for being such a strong leader. And especially for being so just direct. I really appreciate that about you. And you do it in a very graceful way. So thank you so much.
Mr. Ross.
Well, I don't know. I almost don't want to say anything because there's too much to say. So I mean, with the deniers that have come before you, they've said everything that I can imagine saying. Obviously, resolutions speaks volumes. So I guess I'll just maybe be a little personal for a minute sometimes. You know, maybe when we're texting, I often refer to you as Big Sis. And, you know, growing up largely an only child, I've always wanted a big brother or a big sister. And you found an act of, I guess, being a supporter, being an accountability partner, showing love while also sort of maybe filling in a little bit and, you know, smacking me right here, this little hug, because my mama...
Big sister love.
But also really just being a great listener, being honest with your thoughts, allowing me to be honest with mine, even when maybe we haven't agreed, still leaving the room with a big fat hug. And I think really that's really what family is about. And, you know, in that regard, I love you, appreciate you, admire you. Like hundreds, maybe even thousands of others around here are gonna miss you, knowing that you aren't far, knowing that the legacy that you've left, you know, we all will experience that every day when we do the work for the district, of the district. And I really just take my hat off, salute you, and say thank you, really.
Ms. Chaki. So when I was on the outside, with the only but very important role as parent, I believed that you were doing this work for our children, for my children, for Brooklyn, and for Jax. And now that I'm on the inside, I know that this is your North Star. And when you follow your North Star, it makes it really easy to follow behind you. So it has always been my own belief, too, that we do this work for our children. And having you as a leader has shown me how to do that work. So thank you. Serving the children and staff of Grand Rapids Public Schools personally has been the most transformational experience of my adult life. And that is definitely in part to your leadership and your mentorship. I admire you as the mother and grandmother that you are. I admire you as a strong woman of faith. I admire you as a caretaker of this community, this city. I admire you as a committed and loyal GRPS leader. And I admire you as a remarkable and influential female leader who exhibits so many of the qualities that I aspire to. So, T, I hope I've honored that, right? T, I'm so proud to have served under your leadership. And I hope now that I get to call you a lifelong friend. So thank you.
Ms. Lewis.
I have skin in the game. And I've only been on the Board like three years now. And when I first came on, I was a little bit intimidated. We had been at a couple of meetings and things went Teresa's way. And, you know, it's fine. But then she invited me to her office and just to talk about the role of the school board. Well, we got to talking about our grandkids. And she never told me anything about the school board. Everything I've learned, I've learned at these meetings because whenever we're together, we're talking about our grandbabies. But that's what she told me. And see, I was a teacher, and those kids were my kids for years and years. And I always would say my Kennewa kids. I still say my Kennewa kids. But now I say my Grand Rapids kids. And that's what you showed me and said, "When you do something, when you make a decision, you're making the decision not just for Kira and Kayla, but you're making it for all of our kids." And that's probably the most important thing I learned from you, to think of all of these kids when I'm making decisions. And another great thing about you is that you are a great friend and you're a great text messenger. And you send me cheery messages when you know I'm not too cheery, but you're a wonderful friend to me. And I hope this friendship will continue for a long, long time. You're wonderful, and I will miss you greatly. But I know that we'll be going book club.
Ms. Williams.
Well, I want to say that you have demonstrated with authority that you can walk this walk for over 40 years of service. It is greatly appreciated. And thank you for being a shining example of Grand Rapids Public Schools talent. Go Bears!
Reverend Mathias.
Wow. I was one of the privileged Board members that was chosen by the Board to fill in... that was chosen by the board to fill in when one of our esteemed colleagues left. And I never dreamed, coming from a Puerto Rican family with 16 brothers and sisters, going up in urban Chicago, in the inner city, that I would have the privilege of sitting here. And most of all, to see what I consider one of our own grow up in the city and sit where you're sitting, wow. Wow. It can be done. And, and we can take the pain and the heartache and channel that in such a way that we can bring folks, you can bring folks with you. And, and to be able to take not just this room, but then affect the city and affect the other areas, had the privilege of going to Washington with you and you speaking at that level. And again, it, what an honor it has been for so many of our kids. When we made the decision, my wife and I, to send our four kids to the public schools, we knew that, that we had to make the investment in the, in the system itself. And it wasn't symbolic. It was, we're putting our babies in there, and we're putting skin in the game. And so our four kids have gone through Grand Rapids Public Schools and have graduated. And now are college-bound, two graduated from college and too soon to. And it's been because of the involvement of, of the staff, taking care of our kids, of the parents, empowering the parents to do that. And I really appreciate the fact that you continue to say that, that, that they're your children, and certainly our staff, and challenging them to be cross-cultural, to have skin in the game. And so I, I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
So when I decided that I might be considering school board, someone said, well, you need to talk to the superintendent. And I had seen her around, I had met her before, and I knew she was very serious. So I was like, okay, where do I come? Do I come to the office? Would I do this? And no, she wants to meet you at Subway. My goodness. What do I wear? What do I... Do I bring a resume? I don't know what happens. And I was so nervous. And, and Tasha was there, and so it was two very serious Niels there, honing in on me. And they asked me why. Why do you want to serve our children? And when we left there, I knew that I needed to run for school.
That's right.
And I have wanted to be done a lot of times. But you have always told me that I'm the person to do this work. Thank you. Okay, meeting adjourned.